Hey, what's up everybody? Let's try this again. Welcome back to another edition of the weekly work session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. I got the glasses memo today. Welcome to our whole team. We've got a special announcement today that I'm going to have founder Amanda Kilwinke kickoff and then we can all go, you know, round and say hello. Well, as you're coming in, leave a, leave a comment for us in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from and we're excited to help you out today and work with you. I'm gonna take these off now. Hello and welcome everybody to today's session. We have a special guest today who I would like to introduce you to Colin MacArthur. He joined our Get Oiling team, so you will be seeing more of him in our customer service inbox and stuff like that. So Colin, can you introduce yourself and kind of give everybody, you know, a glimpse into why you chose to help us here at Get Oiling and, and tell us a little bit about yourself?
I mean, the why, aside from the sheer awesomeness of this team right now in front of me and the entire platform in itself. Yeah, I mean, let's, but let's, but let's, let's back this up. So hello, reintroduction, I'm Colin MacArthur. A little background on how I got to be into this position here. So about four years ago, my wife, Tanya, and I, we, we, we began our Young Living business. It was, I think about four and a half, five years ago. Within that time span of when we started to when we actually started getting going with Get Oiling, I had been seeking out and self educating on ways of how I could set up a business online and how to market Young Living online. And I had entertained ideas and concepts of like maybe getting a WordPress website and then having to get all the plugins that go along with it in order to make it work with email campaigns and landing pages and all of this stuff and CRMs. I had looked at things like HubSpot. I had looked at all these different systems that cost ridiculous, I mean, I mean ridiculous amount of dollars and was just super complex and convoluted and way past my, my, my pay grade, if you will. And somehow in the ether of the internet, my wife had come across Greg through Get Oiling. And we had had a quick conversation. Greg sent us some information within five, maybe 10 minutes of doing the research and looking into exactly what it is that Get Oiling offered. It was a no brainer. It offered everything. It was all in one place, all one platform. And it was just amazing and obviously made better because it was Young Living made by a Young Living member for Young Living members in itself. It was just perfect. It was an actual perfect scenario. So we, we, we started with Get Oiling and I hammered out as much as I compared with, with that platform and it has done amazing, absolutely amazing things for my business. So fast forward to today, there was an opportunity that Greg and Amanda had required some assistance on the backend and I threw my invisible hat into the, into the ring and said to the, to say to both of them, I would, I would love, I would love an opportunity to help out your customer base. I know the platform very well and I absolutely love it and passionate about it. So I, I wanna, I wanna do this. And a few quick conversations later, they welcomed me with open arms into the Get Oiling team. So thank you so much. And that's, I guess, how I got here. Thanks Colin.
Awesome. We're excited to have you. So yeah, you guys can expect to hear from Colin as well when you reach out. And yeah, yeah, we're so excited to work with you guys. And how, how are you guys? How is everyone? Colin, you're in Canada, right? You're in B.C.
I am, yes.
How, how's the weather there?
Well, I don't know if you can see the glare off my glasses, but there's a nice big window here that overlooks the mountains and the lake and a blue sky and sunny, sunny skies and birds and no snow on the mountain tops. And I don't want to rub it in too much, but it was.
Just a little bit though, right? Just a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's why we live here. It's, it's exactly why we live here. That and, that and the abundance of wineries doesn't hurt either.
Hey, West Coast, that's, they call it the best coast.
It is.
Kim, how are you? You're muted.
There we go. I'm good. Actually beautiful day today. I know Greg and Amanda and I, we're all in the same place. So sunny today, that's nice. Hopefully we don't get any more snow in April. That would be wonderful. Is it snowing where you are?
No, but I heard that it might this weekend and it's getting, it's insane, right? Can, can we just have nice weather? Like just if we're gonna be stuck at home, can, can it be nice outside the windows?
I know. My eight year old today, she has to do a daily check in for school since we're doing it from home like everybody else. And one of the questions is always, is there something you'd like to tell me or something I can do for you? And she said, Mom, can you tell my teacher that I want to be in Florida and I really want the weather to be warm? So.
You and me both, kid. You and me both. All right. Hey, everybody in the chat, welcome. We've got folks from all over the world tuning in here. We're excited to have you. Today we are going to kind of switch things up a bit. We're going to talk about something that we've actually gone into great detail on other videos on before. This is specifically talking about taking your classes online. This is obviously a really important time, the time that we're filming this. You know, we're all basically shut inside our homes, right? And if you are someone who is used to growing Young Living by holding classes, then obviously we've got to look at a new way to share, right? So no matter who you are, no matter what your strategy was previously, the way you want to be sharing is online, right? So we're going to talk about ways that you can do that. I'm not going to necessarily get into the repetitive steps of what we've already covered. I am going to link the two part training below this video when we posted as a recording. Those have downloadable step by step, walk you straight through it checklists, right? So we've got this all ready for you to follow. But I am going to go through some, some slides and then I'm going to bring out Lisa Drennan, who asked a great question in our Go For Gold student group this morning about some specific questions around how to do this specifically using Zoom inside of Get Oiling. So we're going to do that first and then Lisa will pull you out to chat here in just a bit, but I need to share my screen first. This is one of those two coffee mornings. Okay, here we are. So we're going to talk about how to take your 101 class online. If you're not doing 101 classes, you can take any class online this way. So we're going to talk about how you can transition toward online classes. This can be an easy thing. We do have, again, a very thorough outline of how you can not only plan and execute your class online, but then to also turn that into a shareable tool to grow your business. Again, super detailed, got that for you as a recording. We're going to talk about the basics of online events and where to find those in-depth trainings and downloads. And the way we're going to kind of switch this up today is to actually bring out someone with questions and walk through the process. So, so we're going to be kind of doing some live coaching here today. And then of course we'll get into Q and A. So if you came here with questions today about anything relating to your business, about how to grow in this new world we're living in right now, no matter what question it is, no question is too big or small, put those in the Q and A and we will hop over and chat with you after we get through this bit of content. So first I want to ask you guys some questions. Who here has a recorded video of themselves conducting a one-on-one style presentation? A Young Living Essential Oils 101, like show hands? Who has a video of you doing this? Only a few. Oh no, there they go. Yeah, here you are. You're here. Okay. We got a few. All right. So just out of curiosity, let me know in the comments, if you don't have one and you didn't get started, you know, like last week, what do you feel has kept you from creating something like that? What, what do you feel has stood in the way of you having a sharing resource that's online, like a recorded one like this? Can you guys read off some of the comments we're getting around that?
I'm backgrounds lighting. Somebody says I have them, but I need to make them shorter.
Okay.
Let's see here. I don't have enough tech knowledge. Fear of not being professional enough. I've done on from Facebook lives, but didn't record. No tech skills.
Okay. All right. Well, today you're in luck, especially if we're talking about the tech skills front because we're going to talk about the steps that you need to follow. And again, we've got that backed up with literal checklist that you could print out and just cross off one thing at a time to make sure that you've got it done correctly. So how many of you, hands down, how many of you have hosted an online class? How many of you have held an online Young Living class? Quite a bit more. Wow, 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 wow. That's a lot. Now, can we take the hands down one more time? How many of you have hosted an online class? And now this is, this is where the caveat is. I'm not talking about like a Facebook or Instagram class where you, you push out a series of images. I'm talking about one where you have been on video and hosted an online class on video. How many of you have done that? Okay, yeah, basically everyone who just said yes. A lot of you, awesome. Okay, so here's the deal, guys. If you've done that, you can do it again. And when you do it again, you can record it. And when you record it, you can use that inside of a funnel to expose people to Young Living, to present Young Living for you over and over again. So let's talk about the transition to online classes. First, really importantly, and this is before we talk about any tech, this is before we talk about any strategy, the most important thing that we have to address really goes back to the substance of what we are delivering and how we should be communicating the value of it. And this is going to be true for you, whether you're online or offline. I think a lot of folks, especially, you know, post era of saturation of everybody in a community doing, you know, Essential Oils 101 class, it's something that a lot of people are very familiar with because it's such a ubiquitous strategy at this point. This is such a big company. This has been a thing for a very long time. The reason why a lot of folks struggle to get people into their classes in person is the same reason why a lot of people struggle to get people into classes online. And that's because when we're promoting it, when we're sharing what it is we're doing, what we're asking them to do is invest their time in something and we aren't communicating the value of what we have to share in terms that they know, understand, and most importantly care about and recognize as being something relevant to them, right? Essential Oils 101 sounds like, okay, that's cool, but I'm also distracted by this cat video over here, right? But if you're talking about a, you know, essential oils around a very specific relevant topic to a specific set of people, right? If you're going to talk about, and I've got several clients who do this, you know, essential oils of the Bible or, or using, you know, using natural products to help you cope through difficult times, right? Do you see how those really kind of hit on something that matters a lot more than presenting this like a college class? Guys, you know how much we cared about going to college classes when we were in college? You don't want to set them up to psychologically react to what you're sharing in that way. You want it to really hit on relevance. So make sure, even if the information is fundamentally going to be the same, you're still going to talk about seed to seal, you're still going to talk about the PSK. You're still going to talk about what oils are and how they work and the limbic system and all those things that you would be talking about otherwise. But you just need to make sure that you know that you're going to deliver it through a lens of something that really matters to the people that you want to be helping. So that needs to be in the title of it and you need to thread that through the actual presentation itself. Also importantly, we should always plan ahead for the things that we want to do in our business. Now, this does not mean that you shouldn't take action where opportunity presents itself and take action because action is the thing that grows your business. But where we're talking about having a class like this, it really does pay off to plan. I'm a big fan of working once and not having to repeat those same steps to do that same work again. How many of you guys would like to have that going for you in your business? I work once, it continues to work for me, right? So that's what that two-part video series I've already referenced shows you how to do. So it does take some planning. That is a caveat here. You're not necessarily, unless you want to do the crash course after you watch this video and follow the two videos and their instructions and then have your class like, I don't know, tomorrow. Like it's not something that's going to turn around immediately. But the things that we should be doing, the actions we should be taking in our business need to be forward looking ones, right? We need to be proactive and not reactive. You know, would you, like what, what a lot of people would do is having a conversation with a good friend of mine about this yesterday. Most people will take a dollar today instead of doing the work to get a hundred dollars in a week, right? We need to be looking at the hundred dollars in a week. You need to be looking at your residual. You need to be looking not at an immediate need right now. And I know sometimes, man, when I started out in this industry, I had an immediate need right now. I had a need to keep the light bill going, right? I had a threat of that, everything being pulled out from underneath me, right? But we have to look past that and look ahead. We have to look past a need that we feel right now and look at a strategic way to deliver. So make sure that we're planning and then intend for this to become an evergreen thing, right? So plan for a class that becomes a thing that continues to serve your business. That's our game plan here. All right. And then, oops. Also importantly, if I could get back to that, hello. Okay. Importantly, when you're doing it this way that we're going to talk about, it is really perfectly okay if few or no people show up for this because the goal here is not to get 500 people onto a Zoom call. The goal here is to nail a presentation that you can then use over and over and over and over again to repeat the things that you don't need to be repeating over and over and over again, when you could be doing the things that move the needle in your business. All right. So like I mentioned, there is a two-part training on how to plan, set up and run an online class and how to turn that class recording into a sharing tool for your business. Those links will be below this video as a recording. For those of you here live, don't worry, we're going to email it to you. You don't need to worry about that right now. All right. So now I'm going to move over into live coaching, get out of screen sharing. And we are going to chat with, where'd you go? Lisa, all right, Lisa, I'm going to pull you out here. If you could unmute yourself. You there?
I think so.
Yes, hi.
My name.
How are you?
I'm doing really well.
Great. So you had some really good questions today inside of the Go For Gold student group. So tell me a little bit about what you're planning to do or what you would like to do, so we can kind of walk you through what needs to be done to make that happen.
Well, I would like to do is record a, a class. I'm going to call it a 101. And I want it, I've done several on Facebook and, you know, I, last night I was trying to copy and record it to put it in my lead group and it didn't work. And then I, a few weeks ago, I took the class, I'm in 20, I'm in so many classes, I can't remember which exactly when it was, but I was trying to follow the guide to set it up through the Zoom and I just couldn't connect the pieces. So I want to record a short, precise video that explains the kit in a way that people want to use them. That's my goal. I'm thinking I should use Zoom in the video. It said to use Zoom and then upload it to YouTube. So it's always there. You can quickly copy and share it to whoever would like a lowdown. So I had a new lead yesterday that immediately wanted information on the Premier Starter Kit and I had nothing to give them and I was like very upset. So I was like trying to figure out, you know, and I didn't want to redirect them to a different place. I just wanted to give them that link right then and there.
Okay. So yeah, this is something that you can totally do on Zoom. Any other screen recording software will work for this. But you know, if you've got Zoom included with your Get Oiling account, it just makes sense to use that. So you've got two options where it comes to recording your, your screen, right? And I should, I should note here, so we've had questions come through like, how do you, you know, where did, where do the PowerPoints come in or keynote if you're on Mac? What you're going to do, just to kind of back this up to square one, is that when you are going to create this video, you can start with a talking head, just like we've got here. This is how, when you have your video on in Zoom, this is what it looks like, right? There's a little green button in Zoom that says share screen. And then it gives you a number of different options of what to share. If you have your presentation file open on your desktop, then you'll be able to select that and share that. Now, of course, before you do any of this, you need to have hit record. So if you're recording from a Zoom meeting, you have a couple of options in terms of where that file is going to land. Okay? If you are on a device that does not have a great deal of storage capacity, then a better option may be, well, there's two options that you have. Let me just put that out there first. If you are on a desktop computer and you've got a fair amount of available storage, then all you have to do is hit record and it is going to take that recording as an MP4 file and it is going to wind up in a folder, probably a folder called Zoom. I think that's how it does it on your computer. So if you search for your files, there should be a file called Zoom and the recording is going to be in there. And if you set this up inside your Get Oiling and, and you actually launch it from your Get Oiling and it has a name, I'm pretty sure the name applies itself to the file name too. So you could search for that, but either way, searching for Zoom is going to help you find it. That's option one. Option two, for those of you who want to skip the step of uploading your video to a platform, or if you have an older device that maybe doesn't have the available storage space, or if you're doing this from like an iPad or something like that, you're going to want to broadcast your Zoom meeting to YouTube or, or, you know, just like you would to Facebook, like if you wanted to Zoom a Facebook Live, which is, you know, super popular way to use this, it's the same thing. You would just be broadcasting it to YouTube. So those are your two options there. There is, if you look down at the bottom of your Zoom screen, green button in the middle over to the far side, there's a more button, three dots says more. When you hit that, you've got the option to go live on Facebook, live on workplace by Facebook or live on YouTube. So you would use the live on YouTube button, but of course, in this instance, you would need to have had your YouTube account set up. So that's, that's the option there. So that way, it would record straight to that account. You wouldn't have to do anything other than go in and edit the settings on that page or on that video on your channel. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So, so that would be the game plan then. So, you know, just do that without having promoted it so that you have a video to share. You could do that this afternoon. And then what were, you had some other questions too. There were like three or four questions, so to make sure you got all of them.
So my one question was, if I did it through Zoom, am I supposed to have an audience? And if I do have an audience, do I accept their questions to that or would I mute them while I was recording?
Got it, yeah. So if you intend to do this live with an audience, couple of things, I would modify your presentation to set expectations. So if you noticed at the beginning of our, of our call today, we talked a little bit and then I shifted over to screen sharing. I used a keynote, which is like PowerPoint on Mac. And I had an intro slide that's, you know, here's, here's the thing that you came for. And then I had a slide that says, here's what to expect. So if you're going to have a live event, I highly recommend that you have a slide like that in your deck so that you can set those expectations or at least address it verbally before you start moving into the presentation. So let people know that I'm really excited to take any questions that you have, put them in the Q and A and we'll talk after. So that's, that's how I would recommend that. And then in terms of just recording it, if you just want to record to make a video, you don't need an audience. It doesn't matter if anyone's there at all. It's not going to show, you know, you're not going to, like if, if you show up and you're talking to one person and somebody watches the eventual recording, they're not necessarily going to know that it was, you know, one person or what have you. So up to you, how you want to do that.
Okay, awesome. I'd rather not do it in the, with a groove because I think that would be more distracting.
Yeah, it's up to you. I mean, if, if you know what you want to make and you know you want it to be concise, then just, you know, use Zoom to upload a video or just broadcast it straight to YouTube. Of course, that step there, if you do it on your computer, you find that file, you're still going to need to have like a YouTube account or an account with YouTube, Vimeo, Whistia, whatever you prefer to use. YouTube would be free. And if you're doing a one-on, a 101, by all means, put it on YouTube. That's great for leads, right? It wouldn't need to be private gated, you know, behind a paid service like Vimeo. So yeah, you would, you would upload that file and put all the information there. And then of course, your option from there would be to share that YouTube link directly or take that YouTube link and, and use that on a custom page inside of a Get Oiling funnel. So, you know, if somebody wanted to, you know, get that information, you could send them a direct, a direct link, but you could also use that in a funnel that nurtures the follow-up after the fact. So you got options. What else?
The other one. Yeah, my computer's not responding or something.
Let me see if I can find it.
I don't know what just happened, but. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay. The other question I had was, I want to keep it, so I was, the one video I had recorded, I did a live on Facebook and it was 17 minutes long and getting a lot of feedback from my members saying, you know, more than 10 minutes is too much. Can you, you know, lessen it up? Because who wants to spend time listening to 17, 20, 30 minute video? So I guess just tips on, you know, narrowing it down without rushing through. I have so much to say about oils. I love them so much. I just can go on and on for hours about them. And I tend to just grab the, the bottles and show how I specifically use them for my needs. So I guess just to tailor it, so, you know, what would be an ideal length for a video?
Got you, yeah. So, so you, you have to think about the intended purpose of a video. If the purpose is to educate someone to the point where they are ready to make a decision about whether to buy, that's going to be, it's going to necessitate a different link, length of a video than if you are just trying to get someone's attention so that they keep coming back and keep paying attention, right? So at this point where you're going to be sharing this video, this person is already a lead. There's already a relationship. And so what you would do in this situation is create the, the most thorough resource possible, being, you know, cognizant of time, that informs them to the point where it's time to make a decision. Tell you what, if, if you plan to use this as a tool where you have warmed up prospects to the point where they're curious, they want to know about the kit so that they can make a buying decision, it doesn't matter how long it is. When I got started in this industry, I became a top recruiter in my first company by sharing a really crappy recorded webinar of an upline of mine and it was an hour and 45 minutes long. It's the way you go about sharing it that matters. So the system that I followed was basically to say, okay, cool. So you're ready to learn and at this point you've already gone through Ford, right? You've already built the rapport. You already know what it is that they need. And so at this point, this is the same as you sitting down and giving them a presentation. So you say, okay, you're ready to learn. The video is 17 minutes long. Do you, can you confirm that you've got 17 minutes right now to sit down and watch this? And then we're going to sit down and talk about it after. And if they are wishy washy about it, then schedule another time when they can commit to 17 minutes. If this was a video that you intended to put on YouTube to get people curious and take the next step, 17 minutes is a terrible length. You want that to be five minutes or less. As a sharing tool where you've already got someone's commitment to view and they're already interested, I wouldn't worry so much about that.
Okay.
Awesome. But I would, I would say this, right? If you are someone who is not sure how to structure what you say, how you share, keep it from becoming an hour and 45 minutes long. We do want to be respectful of people's time while also honoring the fact that we know they need to know certain things in order to make a decision and that you should, you should expect respect from others around how you choose to run your business. And if they want to engage with you and the way you run your business, they can give you the respect of 18 minutes of their time, right? But here's what I would recommend that you do. You're in Go For Gold, so there is a map your message exercise. There's content mapping. Outlines are the answer here. So what I want you to think about is what are the top level things that you want to make sure that you cover in a 101 presentation? You know, if somebody wants to know the kit so that they can buy the kit, what are the top level things that they need to know? And then you want to focus on those top level things tying back into why they need to get the kit, right? Building up the value of each of those things. Now, what you can do in this video is instead of taking a bottle, like every single bottle and spending 10 minutes talking about all the million different ways you use it, talk about one or two or one and let them know that you have all this other content that can, you know, that they can dive into and, and get to know and understand in ways that they can use it for themselves. So point to other content in the video to keep it shorter and to allow you the opportunity to make more content that generates leads. So if you do, you know, a video on how you use lavender at night, a video on how you use lavender on your kids, for your pets, how you diffuse it and I don't know, how you make a lotion with it, that's five different pieces of content. And those can be floating around on YouTube that then point to a funnel that gives this And those can be floating around on YouTube that then point to a funnel that gives this one-on, 101 presentation, right? You don't have to give everything in the one presentation. It's not the end-all. Your goal here is to provide enough information, a big enough picture, um, and a big enough presentation of value that they're excited to do what's next, right? That they're like, oh, wow, that's, that's a really great deal for a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Like, that's, um, of course I want to do that. And then I can learn about all the other ways you use all of those oils. So, um, so yeah, I would make an outline and choose to cover the top level stuff and then everything that that kind of fits in. So if you have a top level outline, entry for lavender, you know, you list a couple of facts about it and then put recipes and tab under recipes. And, you know, here's all the different ways I use it. Those become content. Those are blog posts. Those are reasons that people can go and engage with something small so that they're curious enough to come to you and say, please tell me more. And then you show them the presentation. Does that make sense?
I love that idea. That makes absolutely sense.
Perfect. Yeah. So it's, and it keeps you organized too. You know what you're going to show up and say. Um, and then of course, you know that there is an abundance of things that you can continue to keep talking about to get more and more people curious and coming back.
Yeah. And some of the earlier trainings I did, um, you know, talked about doing the whole 101, get the kit out. And, you know, so I always get stuck in my head, well, this is how you're supposed to do the essential 101, you know, 102 and all that. So taking one oil at a time, um, I love that idea and that concept and then just kind of gearing it towards and, so the final that you, that, um, you had mentioned that would be like the, the call of action button. You would include that like in the comments in the video if it went into YouTube. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. So if it goes into YouTube, um, if you're going to put your 101 video on YouTube where people can just stumble upon it, then what you want is to put it some kind of, of, of a lead capture link below the video so that that person is able to get in touch with you. So maybe just offer a lead magnet below the video. You know, so if you want to get my resources and get in touch, you know, click here and that'll take them to a landing page that'll offer something cool. Um, and then they can opt in to, to hear from you. They're not gonna buy after watching a video from a stranger on YouTube. You know, they need to have a conversation with you. So the call to action, in the comments, uh, don't, don't deliver your presentation as though you're talking to YouTube, right? But deliver it like you're just showing it to one other person. The call to action below the video is going to be, you know, get in contact to learn more and then have your, have your link there.
Okay. So the link would be like my lead magnet, basically.
Yeah, any, any lead magnet.
Okay. And just so you know, I,
Lead magnet funnel specifically. It'd be the link to the landing page that has, you know. Yeah.
Right.
Lead magnet funnel.
And just so you know, I use all the worksheets and I, I have everything on my outlines. I love it. I love the program. It's been amazing and I've learned a lot. Um, so thank you for putting all of this together for us.
Awesome. Yeah, absolutely. Um, do we have anybody else from Go for Gold in here? Raise your hand. Where's our Go for Gold people at? Guys, if you don't know about Go for Gold, this is a comprehensive solution that teaches you how to market yourself on the internet like a pro. Um, and specifically for Young Living, right? It's absolutely built for you guys. All right. Do you have any more questions around, um, how to get this set up? Are you confident about next steps?
I think I'm confident. I, I do have a question about, I know in the training video that I watched to try to follow along, it looked like there was a PowerPoint presentation and I wasn't quite sure how that connected in. So I'm, I'm just used to doing the lives and, you know, talking and not having really anything but the starter kit in my hand.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll actually see in the videos that I'll be sending out to you guys, and it'll be linked below this recording on YouTube, that what, what I used for the example was actually from Grow Workspace. So when you share, it can be a PowerPoint if that's what you have and that's what you're comfortable with. I really like using PowerPoints to really keep me from falling down, um, talking down rabbit holes, basically. Like I'm, I'm blue and that happens, right? So, um, that helps to keep me organized and make sure I'm hitting all the right points. If, if you don't feel like you need something like that, then it's not necessary. Uh, but there are other options. They have, Grow Workspace's bundles have PDFs in some cases. You could screen share PDF, go full screen and scroll through it and talk through it. Uh, you could use a sway that way as well. Or of course, if you have a slide deck, if you have a PowerPoint or a keynote, you could do that. So if you wanted to use that in your video, all you need to do is of course, first make sure you're recording it or broadcasting it. Uh, and then you're going to share your screen and select that thing that you want to share. And then you're just going to be clicking or scrolling through it as you talk.
That's the key to share the screen in order to get the videos. So,
That's right.
I'm not a techy person. I'm just learning all of this as I'm going. So, and that's where I, the disconnect is because I have no clue, you know, that you hit the share button to get that going. So good. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And definitely make sure if you're gonna have, it sounds like when you record this video, you're probably not going to do this live with other people. But do make sure that you have your settings adjusted and let me actually, um, if I can go over to Get Oiling.
Yeah, cause as you can see, I don't know how to even turn the video on for this.
So we're on a webinar right now. So this is a little different from what we have inside of Get Oiling. Um, and I'm not really sure why, if I can help, if I can like let you talk, that I wouldn't let you also show your video. I know some people are able to. And I'm, I'm not really sure. Um, but let me, let me see. Okay, I'm, I'm going to share my screen here. And actually, you probably do see a green button on your Zoom, um, with share screen. Let me show you actually, if you're going to set up a Zoom meeting, we have, and this is an update, because our, uh, the training I'm referencing, uh, and that will be shared, the links of the previous trainings are, uh, from October of 2019. And we have since, especially here recently, added a bunch of important features to our Zoom meetings to make them more secure for you. And I say we, like, I'm anything close to Greg's magic wand wielding over there. So, um, here's what Greg has done. What you want to make sure, you, you want to make sure that you set this up the way that you want to. So if you do want this to be kind of more like this, like our weekly work session setup, um, without having webinars, you can automatically start video for yourself. Um, you could choose to not have, uh, your participants' videos show up automatically. You can choose to mute them upon entry. I recommend that you use this setting. I would not allow attendees to join before you. Auto-record the meeting on my computer. Make sure you do this. Uh, if you want to make sure that you, you know, don't get into a presentation and then totally forget to hit record. You can enable a waiting room. I would do that. Uh, and then you can also use a password, which is, uh, a good thing to do right now. So, um, and that's it. So you create your meeting. Uh, it can be recurring one. It could be a one-time thing. We show you how to set this up in the training video. That'll be linked for you guys. So, um, so yeah, just make sure you have that and then share your screen to show what you want to show. Or if you want to just talk, you can talk through it if you feel more comfortable that way. It's really up to you. It's not, it's not magic, right? Like, there's no one tool that is going to make a person sign up for Young Living. Like the magic thing is their relationship with you, your ability to connect them from their need to their need fulfilled and Young Living being the vehicle. And that's going to require a lot more than whatever video you're going to create. There's a, a relationship and conversations you need to have before and after. Um, and it matters how you do that. So, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too worried about it. Definitely don't focus on perfection. You know, focus on completeness and then making sure that you're really just kind of following through the process.
Well, thank you so much. That was very helpful.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you so much for coming out. All right. So let's get into some Q and A here. All right. Uh, Holly has a Zoom question. Um, she says, I have the ten-person limit Zoom. If I do more than ten, if, I'm sorry, if more than ten try to use the link, does it just not allow them in? I'm trying to decide if I should use that link or just use the free thirty-minute one straight through Zoom. Hope this makes sense.
Yeah. So the answer to that is, I think it's ten, it's limited to ten plus you. So after the eleventh person, person joins or tries to join, they'll get some sort of message. I don't know what it says. Now, we are able to offer like, if you, you know, if you're, it sounds like you're on the basic plan. If you would like to step up your Zoom attendees without having to move to premium, there's some very reasonably priced options. So you could just email us. That's supportedgetoiling.com and we can get you set up with, you know, even if it's just a few more. If you're like, I need twelve people, you know, email us. We can figure out basically any plan that you need for Zoom.
Awesome. All right. Josh asks, how does Zoom work within Get Oiling if we already have a Zoom account? This is an enterprise, um, right? This is like Zoom enterprise. So it's through Get Oiling. It's separate from your Zoom. So you would set up, like, if you were just using Zoom on your own, without Get Oiling, you would have, you know, like your Zoom dashboard where you set up your meetings and all of that kind of stuff. Instead, you're doing that on Get Oiling. So, um, you don't need to pay for it. Like, it's actually got more features than it would on, um, on the Zoom, uh, regular Zoom account over there that you'd pay for. All right. Another question from Holly. Can you please tell me how to do a side-by-side video interview like Martha does to Facebook Live? Oh, just do, like, be on a meeting with another person or several persons. And, uh, at the bottom of, and, and we have, there's, if you Google how to go live on Facebook with Zoom, like there is a, a Zoom help article that shows you exactly what to do. There's more, um, down on your bottom where you see share screen, polling, Q and A. Well, I guess polling's probably not there for meetings. Anyway, down where you see share screen, there is a more and it has three dots and you click that and then that'll allow you to broadcast to Facebook. It'll take you to a page on Facebook to set it up, uh, and then you're good to go. All right. Shanna, when you said that you gave five of the same presentations multiple times a day, should we schedule the class for multiple times? I want to make sure people don't say, oh, that time of day doesn't work for me. Okay, so, um, this is what I recommend. I do not recommend being live or having five presentations a day. Uh, I don't think that that is the most profitable possible use of your time. I think that what you want to do, and, and I, we've done trainings on this in the past, you want to have multiple options available for someone who is interested so that they can commit to something in the future. And if their schedule doesn't fit it, you can show them right now. And that's what we've been talking about today is creating an online class presentation that gives them the same benefit of having been able to show up to something live, in person or otherwise, get that same information if it's got twenty minutes, eighteen minutes, whatever minutes right now. So that's what you want to do. Maybe schedule an opportunity where once a week or a couple times a month, you do a live presentation. Uh, but you don't need to have a live presentation. Like you, you don't need to do that all the time. It's good to go live, but it's better to go live in a way to get engagement. If you're going to do a class, do one a week at most and then use the recording from that class for the people who are like, oh, I have something else to do. Now, I mean, in the world we're currently living in right now, I don't know what else they have to do. What else are we gonna do right now? Let's watch videos and learn things. So yeah, you want to make sure that you have a recorded option available for your people. All right. Susan, great question. What is evergreen? Uh, so just like a tree that's evergreen, its leaves are green all the time. Something in your business that is evergreen is something that's useful all the time. It's not something that you have to continue doing over and over again. So, uh, just as an example, I know you're in Go for Gold. One of the things that we, uh, work on in Go for Gold is your, is, is a funnel, right? A funnel and just sort of the basic settings of your page. Everything in there is evergreen because it's not going to change with the seasons. It's not going to change with the month. It's not going to change with a PV promo. You've got all the basics in place that can continue to do the work for you after you've done the work once. That's the idea. So a, an evergreen presentation would be you hitting on all of the main points of the premium starter kit so that someone can make the decision to buy one. And then you use that in January, you use it in June, you use it in December. You use it this year, you use it next year. I mean, obviously if the kit changes significantly, maybe you shift it, maybe you change it up a bit, uh, but it's not something that you have to recreate on a regular basis. Which is something that if you're going live all the time, you do kind of have to do. And you're just doing work over and over again on a hamster wheel, when the thing that really makes you the most money and shifts the most progress forward in your business is conversations with people. So the things that you're doing over and over again need to be things that move you toward one-on-one conversations. And, uh, having a tool like that is going to help you accomplish that. All right. Why would you Zoom a live instead of just doing it on YouTube or Facebook directly? Okay, so the main reason why you want to do this is for the, the ability to edit and repurpose. So if you're recording your Zoom onto your device, you don't have to go try to get it on Facebook and download it off of Facebook and, and fool around with it that way. If you, well, okay, I'm not going to go on too long of a rant here, you guys. Facebook Live is really only good for engagement. And it's something that should be used sparingly. It is not something that you should lean on for education or for promotional purposes beyond something that's immediate. Facebook Lives are fine for PV promos. They're fine for getting people engaged, starting conversations and, and establishing relationship with people at scale. But it is not something that you should be using to teach your members um, on like evergreen stuff. So this would be talking about the properties of lavender versus the fact that it's a PV promo this month. Okay, so the stuff that's immediate, that's fine for. But once you put a live on Facebook, it just becomes a post that gets buried underneath all of the other posts and nobody sees it. But if you have saved it to your computer, you can then put that on YouTube where it will continue to be seen. You could take that YouTube and put it onto your blog. You can take that link and, and upload it to your blog. You can then share that out as content again later. It doesn't just become a thing that you did once and spent a bunch of time on that is arguably not really useful ever again. I hope that makes sense. All right. I think my second question was just addressed. Still not sure I understand. Holly, if, um, I know that was a little bit ago, definitely ask if you need clarification. Okay. How do you classify the YouTube video? If you're doing a 101 presentation, then just have it public. I mean, you want people to learn more and get in touch with you. If it's something that you don't want people to see, uh, then make it unlisted, you know? So if you're not quite ready to get into like a paid Vimeo membership, for instance, then something that's maybe specific to your team, you make unlisted on YouTube. You also have the option to do like password protected or like only available by some, but that's just kind of a headache to manage and I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. All right. Um, I find it, see Donna says, I find it much better to have an audience. It's inspiring to know that the room isn't empty that I'm speaking to. Yeah, yeah, I know. I, I hear you. I hear you. I grew up a performer. Being on stage is energizing. Having people there is energizing. Um, and if that's what you want, then, you know, obviously promote it, but make sure that your friends come too, just so you've got that feeling there. And, uh, and also understand that, uh, I don't know, you can tap into that without it having to be right there in front of you too. Just get excited. All right. What is the difference between a webinar and a screen sharing on a Zoom? So it's, uh, webinars are a completely different Zoom software feature. Meetings are what we have in, in Get Oiling. A webinar is what you're on right now. So, uh, unless you go buy webinar plan from Zoom, that's not something that's really involved here and you don't really need it. Screen sharing is screen sharing the same on both. So if you hit the green button to share your screen, it shares your screen no matter what software you're on.
So, yeah, one other interesting thing about that, like if you take a Zoom meeting and stream it to Facebook, it essentially kind of becomes like a webinar. You know, one of the features of the webinar is that
That's right.
The people, the Zoom, you know, the attendees can't say anything and they can't show up on video. So, that's a great alternative and a much lower cost alternative because the, the webinars through Zoom, I think are, I don't know, fifty, sixty bucks a month or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Why do we want a waiting room? So, um, Tanya, it just basically psychologically provides some kind of catchment there. So if you're having technical difficulties, um, they've got a space where they know that this is about to happen. Um, and it feels a little bit more, I don't know. It's, it's a psychological thing. I recommend it. You could choose not to.
Yeah. And it's also, I think, you know, they've promoted it recently as a security measure because then people can't just pop into your meeting. You have to approve them to come in. So if you're concerned that someone might jump on your meeting, um, that's a great option.
Yep. All right. Cynthia, I hope that addressed your question. I think that just got answered. All right. If you automatically record Zoom, can you edit out the beginning from the meeting when attendees come in and when you actually begin? Yeah. And so this is actually a benefit as well of, you know, if, again, if you want to create something that stays yours, why would you record versus just going live? Once you get that MP4 file, it's very easy to trim it. Um, and whatever the native app is on, on your device. So, and, and I forget which one that I use here. Uh, Greg Googled it.
Yeah. Quick time on Mac is like two seconds and you got it trimmed. I'm not sure about PC, but there's got to be a free one for that too.
Yeah, yeah, there, there certainly is. And if you just go to the edit menu, it's going to say trim and then you just trim the video to your liking. All right. Heather says, I have a Zoom account outside of Get Oiling because I use it for another business and personal calls right now. Can I use the Zoom inside of Get Oiling for things other than my Young Living business? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Zoom account.
Okay, Tanya said that she set her Zoom today for two hours and it kicked her out at 40 minutes.
Okay. The, when I've seen that happen, there's a couple of different ways. So like, the meeting does have to be started from the Get Oiling back office. So if you go through the, you know, if you just join your attendee link, there's some chance that you would end up with that 40 minute meeting. So you do have to push the button inside Get Oiling to make sure that doesn't happen. So if you have other problems, certainly reach out to us. We can help.
Awesome. Camelia says, when sending out a newsletter, will they only receive a link or can they open it, open right into the newsletter? Either way, it's up to you. So depending on what you mean by newsletter. So we have newsletter included and it's editable. You can change what it says on our landing page templates. So some people refer to a newsletter as just a digital email that goes out every week with, you know, a roundup of here's the blog posts that I did. That counts as a newsletter. Maybe you get an actual more formal, this is a pretty newsletter that I got from a content provider, which is less of a, an ongoing message campaign and more of a blast, right? So sending a single, here's the thing out instead of a series of messages. You've got a lot of options there where that's concerned. If you have a PDF type version of, of a newsletter, which some do, like the principal, like it looks like the kind you'd print out, then it can, you can set your landing page to redirect. So after the visitor enters their information, they then go to this website. That's a setting on your landing pages. And so that way they put their name and email in and pop, there they are. They are on that piece of content. That's an option. Another thing you can do is just have a confirmation pop up. I'll let them know to check their email and then they would get the actual newsletter in email format. It really just depends on how you want to set that up and what you're defining as a newsletter.
There's a quick comment that came in about that. Like what about emailing out a Sway newsletter? And that one, you do have to use a link because Sway is kind of like interactive and got some fancy animations and all that. So you do have to email a link to that rather than like trying to copy and paste it all into the email, which usually doesn't work so well.
Yeah, although if you do go, if you go to our Get Oiling YouTube channel and you search Sway, you'll see that there are a number of different ways that you can use it, including embedding it into an online class as well as into a page. So this could be a redirect. So, you know, so if they enter their name and info, their name and email, they're then redirected to a custom page inside your Get Oiling account where the Zoom is actually embedded. And they can scroll through it on that page. Maybe there's a button below that says get in touch or something like that. So that's, that's definitely an option too. And just go to, again, get a youtube.com forward slash Get Oiling and search. And it's not the top search bar on YouTube. There's one like, you know, where you see like videos and playlists and stuff like that. There's a search option. Search for Sway. All right. So the split screens on Facebook Lives are really Zooms shared live on Facebook. When they're Zoom facilitated, yes, I can't speak to the other platforms. There are definitely other, you know, platforms that could be used for that same purpose, like Be Live TV and stuff like that. But you don't need to pay for them because you got it in Get Oiling with Zoom. And that makes it super easy. All right, Judy, I have Go For Gold and love it. Spent a lot of time thinking through the lead magnet and campaign. My issue is when I, when do I actually reach out to my prospects? Should I be doing the Destin for Diamond at the same time? Judy, if you have Go For Gold, I would just go through Go For Gold first because that's going to direct you specifically, strategy and tech together toward a specific outcome. Go, save the Destin for Diamond emails to really just kind of get a deep dive into learning the different feature aspects of Get Oiling and making sure that you have it set up to your liking. The more direct thing to do would be to follow Go For Gold. When it comes to, when it comes to, and like actually reaching out to your prospects, when someone opts in for a piece of information, a lead magnet that you've put out there, try to get in touch with them immediately. You know, reach out and just say, hey, like, you know, how'd you like what you got? How can I help you? I mean, even us, right? Like we, we have ad campaigns running for Get Oiling. And when somebody opts in to get a lead magnet that we've created, even though they're getting a campaign, immediately our team sends an email out to them, a personal one with their name saying, hey, saw that you opted in for this. How can I help? Right? We do that. You should do that too. Right? So don't, don't count on what you wrote in the campaign to do all of the heavy lifting for you. It will do a great deal of it. But when a lead is a lead, talk to the lead. And the sooner you can talk to them, the better. So send an email, text, or, or call if they gave you their phone number. And then use either of those pieces of information, email address or phone number to search for them on Facebook if you're not sure who they are. Because a lot of times you'll actually find Facebook profiles based on that information. All right, Camelia, how do we set up multiple webpages in Get Oiling? I have one, but I have more at the middle level. I'm not sure what you mean by that. Maybe, hold on a second. Camille, if you want to like raise your hand real quick and we can let you talk, and maybe we can clarify that and help you out. All right, perfect. All right. If you want to unmute yourself, would love to help you figure that out.
Hello.
Hi.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Sometime it, when trying to write, when I'm trying to express, absolutely something to be desired. So my question was regarding, I was working to email last night through Grow Workspace. And Greg answered one of the questions. I was trying to use, I've imported my contacts from Young Living. But then I stopped, I didn't send it out because of my other experience, I didn't know that the Sway link wouldn't show it. So that question was answered. And because I wrote several questions, can you repeat the question that you were just asking me?
Sure. Sure. Let me, let me find that real quick. All right. How do we set up multiple webpages?
Oh, yes. So I have the middle level. And it says that you can have up to, I think, don't, don't quote me, but up to five, like website options for different leaders, at least as I understand, and I may not be correct. I barely just got the one set up. I was having trouble with the, couldn't have a funnel and that. But I thought we could have more than one. Like right now I have Healthy Body, but I also want to do Clean Home or the, you know, Around the Thieves or Toxin-Free Living. There's other ones that I'd like to use. Are we, do we only have one website and one funnel at a time or able to do more?
Okay. So I think what you're talking about are the, the pre-built website themes, right?
Yes, pre-built website things.
All right. So you have a multitude of options here. You've got Leg Builder links. And what you do when you come down here to Leg Builder links, it's almost all the way down, you get to create one. And when you do that, you actually choose what the website theme is. So you could set up a Leg Builder link for all of these. Just make sure that it's got your sponsor and enroller information in here. The reason why this feature was created was to allow folks to basically give a small version of a website to their team who are maybe just getting started to make sharing easy for them. So we're, it's sort of like replicating your website for them. I don't recommend it at scale for somebody who's just getting their feet wet, maybe just trying to share for the first time. This is perfect. But then, you know, of course, beyond that, they need to get their own Get Oiling account to generate leads and yada, yada. But one of the cool benefits of this is that you have the ability to share, to have a page for all of these. So to have a link for every single one of these themes, share with whomever you choose. So you would just come over here and build a Leg Builder link for it.
So this Leg Builder, use this website theme, but it's to help others. It's not for me to have five of us to say here.
Well, so it was, it was built, it was developed for the ability to do that, but you can also use it for yourself.
Oh, well, I showed it to someone last night, just asking to just look at mine when my team members and they're like, hey, how do I get this? So I sent them my link, my referral link or whichever. So I'm going to meet them today about getting Get Oiling, but that's helpful for other people who are just not in position so they can try it out.
Correct. Yeah, you can, you can make for anyone in your organization, so long as you've got their enroller and sponsor information, you can make just a simple thing that they can use. You know, maybe they don't know much about Young Living yet and they want to just be able to share something that can help people learn. Yeah, this will give them. And then of course, the page, it's exciting, right? The page that they land on, when someone clicks the link is actually going to pop off to their sponsor and enroller information on the Young Living site.
Wow. Thus the link, oh, the builder, a light just came on. Some bright, I have to put on sunglasses.
I love it.
That is brilliant. Thank you so much. I've tried to write and I've just felt like sometime I just need to talk to somebody so that it makes perfect sense. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the invite is open. You guys, that's why we do this. You know, we can be back and forth and email all the time and we certainly are, you know, as many of you know, but, but yeah, like sometimes it really just, just take a conversation. That's why these are work sessions.
You know, I've been working on this for three weeks trying to figure it out and you just answered it in less than two minutes. So.
Power. All right. Well, I see you had a couple of other questions. Let's pop through those real quick while we're still chatting. Okay. There was one here. I tried to send out my newsletter in Get Oiling. Will I see the whole newsletter first or do I just send a link? Is there a sign up for a class model? Are you, are you using something from Grow Workspace here? Or?
Right. So I have Grow Workspace. And so what this, this newsletter, and I tried to come in to just send it through Get Oiling to all of my, to my downline. But I guess I got, it was later last night, I got confused on how to see, you know, send the newsletter to them. Will it say that it's from me? Will I, do I only put that little link and hope that they click on it? You know?
So tell me, tell me more about the actual content of the newsletter. Is it like, is it a?
Through Get, through Grow Workspace.
Right. Is it a sway or a campaign? Do you know?
It is like monthly, like their April newsletter that I enhance, add things to, and then I wanted to send, it's a little late, but I'm, I'm just trying to hop in there. It's in the newsletter.
So when you go to look at it inside of Get Oiling, is it on a saved reply or a campaign?
It's a, I use the Sway, the Microsoft Sway link?
Oh, you want to send the sway out. Okay.
Newsletter, I guess newsletters sway, I guess. I'm new to this language. So.
It's okay. It's okay. They, so they, they have a lot of options. Grow Workspace has a lot of options. And I'm, I'm not familiar intimately with all of the different ones and which one you're talking about. So it's a sway that you want to share?
It's the April, like it's Grow Workspace April Newsletter Template, which I added things to it. And then I wanted to send it out. And I wanted to use my imported contacts in Get Oiling to send out the newsletter.
Okay, okay. So let me see. I'm actually gonna, let me help you with this right now. I'm going to share. All right. So we're in your account right now. I want to see where this is. Have you uploaded? Like you clicked like the resource sharing from Grow Workspace and you've brought it over here into Get Oiling?
Did I bring it in? That's a very good question. All I did was to, in the Microsoft Sway, send that, take that link.
Mm hmm. Okay.
So I copied the link to bring it over, I guess. And I sent it only out to birth, I sent it out to one person, but I actually wound up having to sending it out my regular email because I couldn't figure out how to send it here.
Okay, got you. All right. So, so you have a link. You don't really have to build anything at all. All you have to do is go to manage under your contacts. Okay. And then filter for whoever you want to reach, right? So if you want these to be your customers, if you want them to be on a central awards or not, then you, you filter for that. And then you're just going to go to actions and mail. And then you're going to write what you want to write to them and paste the link in the body here. And it's going to send to the people that you've chosen.
So just the link, so it won't pop, they won't see, they have to click on the link?
That's right. They will have to click the link. So you have to tell them, tell them in the email that you got to click the link to see it. Another option, another option. And again, if you go to our, if you go to our YouTube channel and you search for Sway, you're going to find, you're going to find several videos and instruct you on how, like different ways you can use Sway. But here's one thing that you can do. If you go to settings and you go to custom pages and you follow the instructions on those videos, you can actually have a page inside your Get Oiling account that you're pointing to. So it's not going off to Microsoft Sway. The website is going to go to your website. And the sway is on your website. Does that make sense? So then the link that you would be sharing is the page that you create here. And again, that's, that is something that you can watch the video that takes you straight through it, step by step. Okay. We actually use Grow Workspace for that too. We take one of their sways for that.
And take one of those ways for that. Okay.
Yeah, it shows how to use a Grow Workspace sway. And like, I don't know, three or four different ways, like making a funnel with it. Like, there's a lot of different ways you can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I'll review this to hear what you just said again. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for coming on. All right. Let's pop through the rest of these. Got a lot of questions today. Good job, guys. Showing up. All right. Jody asks, when I go to screen sharing, how do I get the slideshow, get to the slideshow directly instead of having to go to my desktop first? So when you hit the share screen button, it's going to present you with multiple opportunities of what you can choose to share. So just make sure that you have your slide deck open. So Word or Pages, whatever, or not Pages, Word or Keynote, whatever you're using. And then you select that. So when you hit the share screen button, the green button in Zoom, it's going to pop up some options for you. Select your presentation as the option and it won't share your screen. All right, Robin, can you explain the difference between using YouTube or Vimeo and what you just mentioned of paid Vimeo? Is one better than the other? We use both. They're both important. If you, if you're making content that you want to be found by anyone so that you could get leads from anywhere that belongs on YouTube and it needs to be public. If you want a piece of content that is supposed to be truly private and only available for the people who exclusively have access, so your members, your team, or your leads, if you, you know, want to provide an exclusive bit of content, then you want to use something like Vimeo. That's because you can actually edit the sharing settings to where it can't be shared and it can only be viewed on certain websites like yours. So that's kind of the difference there. If you aren't in the position to invest in Vimeo at this point in your business, then the other option would be to have an unlisted YouTube video. So not a public one, but an unlisted one. Both are important though. YouTube for getting leads and then Vimeo for being able to maintain the integrity of your content. All right. Well, the Facebook Live Producer change how we stream to Facebook. Sharon, I don't know the answer to that question. Greg, do you know?
No, no, I've heard, you know, apparently Facebook has this tool called Live Producer, but I haven't dove into it to figure out what it does or, you know, if it's different. I assume.
Heard of it.
I think it's brand new actually. So, yeah, that's all I know.
I mean, I teach you guys how to do this stuff. I'm not really that techie. All right. You have no clue. Let us know if you find out. All right. If you use the direct Zoom to YouTube feature, do you lose the ability to edit later? I think so. I think you do, right Greg?
I mean, I assume if it's recording, because if you're, if you livestream to Zoom, or sorry, if you livestream from Zoom to YouTube and you also hit record in Zoom, it's still going to save a copy on your computer. So I think you have a copy. But that's one of those good things to test. Yeah, that's a very good thing to test. Try it. It's like a 10 second video and see what happens to it before you do your real one.
Yeah, run a low stakes test. But the other thing, and this is what I've noticed with, with doing lives on Facebook, like Martha and I do these and we'll be like, we'll be on Zoom talking for five minutes and, you know, being, well, having bad behavior. But you guys never see it because we don't hit like go live until it's time to go live, right? So when you are broadcasting, even if you're recording your video, which you're recording to your device, when you broadcast, you get to choose when, right? So just like we get together and we're on here for a few minutes before we broadcast to you guys. I have the whole recording of that. I need to edit that before we put it up onto our YouTube channel. But if we were going straight to YouTube, we'd still be able to press go when it's time to. But it wouldn't be editable once it's on YouTube. You can't edit a video on YouTube. You can add like annotations to it, but you can't like, you know, crop or remove stuff. You'd have to like republish it. All right. If you want to open up a challenge to leads as well as members, do you offer it to leads with a charge or good faith measure? Or what things people usually charge for is, okay. So Shanna, we're, we're running things like 28 day challenges, 15 day challenges, challenges generally using say like a Get Oiling vault. You should be doing this as a means to get people onto membership. A challenge is a pretty significant investment of your time, especially if you don't have all of the automations in place that we teach you how to do with Go For Gold. So you want that to be something that really moves the needle for you. So the idea here is you do a Ningxia challenge. And in order for people to actually participate. So the idea here is you do a Ningxia challenge and in order for people to actually participate in the Ningxia challenge, they need to get Ningxia, right? They need to become a member. And so the idea is that you are helping them to get onto product and get into the habit of using product. Now, if you wanted to run a short challenge that was around something like gratitude and make that for leads, that's cool. Make sure it's automated, though, so that it doesn't take up a ton of your time. I I would not pour my time into something that I only do once if it isn't going to have some kind of significant payback for me, unless, of course, I'm just planning on being charitable, which I can do sometimes, but it's not a regular MO of a business because we can't really, you know, run a business like a charity. So, so yeah, people charge in terms of what people charge for with Get Oiling inside those vaults. Courses, online courses, coaching programs. Content subscriptions are just a couple of examples of things that people actually do pay for inside of the platform and things that you could use it for. But if you want to run a challenge inside of a vault and Get Oiling, really recommend that the cost of admission be buying a product, right, becoming your member. I think that's the most important thing. That's the whole point of doing a challenge is to get people onto membership using product. All right, if you do the same one. Okay, I have no camera on my computer and I'm not sure I can plug one in to use it. How can I find out before I bother buying one? And do you have to run a Zoom meeting from your computer? Can you use your phone? You can use your phone. You can use basically any device that can have the Zoom app. So you could do that and show your face that way. You can't, I don't think, you can't go live on like a mobile device with Zoom, right?
Yeah, I think there's some limitations around that and recording on the device. So it's better to use the computer. If you notice, if somebody that has a camera, maybe you can borrow it. That'd be an option.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think if there's some way to use your phone as the camera while you're on the computer. I don't know. I have some people seen some people join like twice. They'll be on the phone for the voice, but then they've got the video camera on. So maybe that would work kind of like you join your own meeting on your phone for the camera, which you talk us through the computer. I don't know. You could play around with that, I suppose.
Yeah. I mean, I think there may be a way for you to connect, say, like a phone to a computer and then, I don't know, this is I would confuse you trying to explain what I obviously don't know right now. So use what you have. And, you know, and pick, pick a, pick a lane, get comfortable with it, improve upon it. Every step you take is a good one because you're you're going to learn from it. So, yeah, just try it out on your computer. I mean, just even though you maybe you can't like show your face, you can share your screen and you can go through slides or sway or something like that to to facilitate a video. All right. My URL for my landing page says landing within it. Can I rename that? I'm using this link on my personal Facebook page and elsewhere. So what do you think?
The URL is it? Yeah, I mean, you can't right now rename that. There's a couple of options, though. I mean, you could use a link shortener at the moment or if you have a few dollars, you know, to do this, some people, you can buy a domain name and then just have that forward to the landing page.
Yeah.
Those are all great options.
Yep, yep. I like that that latter option, especially to like if you own your domain, you can actually go in through GoDaddy or whatever and just, you know, have subdomain redirects or, you know, this, this dot yourname.com or yourname.com forward slash whatever, like you can actually do that. Or just make a Bitly, you know. At the end of the day, if you're going to be sharing on Facebook and elsewhere, you really just want to make sure that you've got the metadata set up the way you want it so that when it's sharing, it populates that information. Because actually, when you paste in a URL on Facebook, it populates that information and you can actually remove the link anyway. So it's it's not visible anymore. And in most cases, you would want to have it embedded, like if it's going to be like in an email, you're going to actually have the link inside of clickable text. All right. I've done a couple of Zoom calls through my Get Oiling site. Is there a limit to the number of people and also is there a time limit?
Got to unmute on that one. There, there's a limit on the number of people based in your plan. I think basic is 10 and premium is 100. The time limit is the same as the pro Zoom. So it is, I mean, you know, we say unlimited, but I think technically it's like 24 hours or something like that. It's way longer than anyone would normally want to be on a Zoom meeting. So, yeah.
Awesome. Carolyn, what email address do I used to email you about Zoom? Support@getoiling.com? Let's see. How does the custom email we get with our Get Oiling Plan work? I think I have it, but not sure.
If you get an email address through us, then we would send you the login information for that, how to access that account, you know. So if you get, if you have a domain, whether you bought it or you get it through us, we do have the option of adding on an email address for you. So it could be like yournameatyourdomain.com just for a more personalized branded experience. And if you've lost login information, email us, we'll find it for you and send it to you.
All right. So we got a question from Sharon about how to put a PDF into Get Oiling. Really, really quick, I'll show this to you. Anywhere you see an editor on the Get Oiling site there, let's see, it's right over here under Rich, this part. I can zoom in right here, this guy right here. You've got several options. You can insert or manage files. This is what you're going to be doing after you upload a file. So this single page icon is what you want to hit first. Upload that from your computer. Let me see if I have a PDF in here. Anyway, you're gonna well, I'm not going to use any of those. You're gonna upload it from your computer right here and it's going to pop up here with like a weird looking little paperclip and a link. What you can do at that point is just delete that text or grab the hyperlink. But what you're going to be able to do once you upload a file is over here, Insert or Manage Files, you are then going to see your guide, your PDF up here in your Files Manager. And so then you just click that and you can edit the chat, the text to, you know, click here or whatever you want. All right. Okay. What is the difference between Member Area and Vault? Member Area is is where the vaults live. You can't access anything in the member area except vaults. And vaults are where all the goodies go. That's where people hang out. All right, I'm creating my first lead magnet. When I tried to download pictures from Pixabay, they were charging. I thought it was free. No, you can absolutely use free free photos from Pixabay. You just have to make sure that you're picking the free ones. That's what you want to do. Just make sure that you're reading the fine print. In some cases, when you search on a free image site like Pixabay, there will be a row of images that are actually from a paid service like Shutterstock. So make sure that you're seeing the actual URL that you're getting stuff from and don't give them your billing information if you don't want to buy from them. But yeah, that's Pixabay is typically where I go if I want to get something free. If anybody else has suggestions, please leave them in the chat here for your favorite free free picture service.
Yeah, Unsplash.com is another one.
That's the one I couldn't think about. Yep. All right. With the premium package, can you do text messages?
Yeah, I mean, with any any plan, you can actually do texting. All the plans come with texting. By default, it's one way texting. You can send from our central number. If you want to have your own phone number so people can text you back and have text and keywords, that's the two way texting feature and you can add that on. There's a P for that. But click the chat link in the upper right hand corner to get our link back office and then that would enable it. And you're kind of walking through turning that on and trade the price and all that.
Perfect. All right, Terry, how can you create a link for each theme, same enroller sponsor? Just use that Leg Builder link that I was showing Camelia a little while ago. You can set those up for any enroller sponsor combo for any number of of those themes. All right, I'm new to Get Oiling and Go For Gold about a week. And when do I add my organization and Get Oiling and does Go For Gold talk about this? So Go For Gold does not talk specifically about uploading your your contacts from your VO. Get Oiling really focuses, I'm sorry, Go For Gold focuses most on getting systems in place for you to get new leads who become your members. But there's a lot of ongoing member education and nurturing that you can be doing using our content providers of which you can find on our website. So there are steps in your back office that show you exactly how, if you look at the little progress bar, you click that, it'll walk you through the critical steps that you need to set up your account. And there's, there's videos and support and everything like that there, too. So that way you can send out, you know, monthly PV promos and, you know, educational content and things like that in a more strategic way and and also welcome. And we're here every week. And if you go to youtube.com/getoiling, search for anything you're looking for. Or if you click the little question mark at the bottom of your screen when you're signed into Get Oiling, search for whatever you're looking for. And I'm pretty sure you're going to find an answer there. If not, you can reach out to our amazing team. All right, I'm confused on what to put in the vaults and what to put in a campaign just to share your lead magnet. So your lead magnet is something that would go into a funnel. If you go to getoiling.com/getleads, we show you how to create a funnel. If you're in Go For Gold, we also show you how to create a funnel. So that shows you exactly where to put what. In your vault, that's where you're going to put your member education. That's where you're going to host your 28 day challenges. It's where you're going to have your specialty content, where you're going to have member content, builder content, things like that. Think of a Get Oiling Vault kind of like a Facebook group, but better, more impact, less time. For leads, that's the kind of thing you're going to be delivering in a campaign. Your lead magnet is something that's attached to a campaign in a funnel. So just make sure that you get that funnel training, whether in Go For Gold or getoiling.com/getleads. All right, can we add an affiliate link from a non young living company and Get Oiling? You can add any of any affiliate link and Get Oiling. If you're blogging and and you're not like putting affiliate links in there for like Amazon or whatever you can get affiliate links from, like you're you're leaving money on the table. Yeah, absolutely. Do get into some affiliate marketing. You can absolutely put those links anywhere you see the the ability to make clickable text in Get Oiling. All right, where do we make notes for various people in our contacts? What do you use to edit a video? All right. So good two questions. The first one, when you open up a contact card, that just means click, click on their name. It's going to open up their contact card. There's a field at the top right that says Background Info. That's where you can make those notes. And then what do you use to edit a video? Depends on what it is. Like Greg said earlier, really like using QuickTime on a Mac because it's very simple and easy to use. If I need to do something a little more extensive, if I'm producing videos for a course, I personally on a Mac use ScreenFlow. Previously on Windows computers, I've also used Camtasia. So those are both perfectly good for editing, although you might have a native one. If it's just a matter of trimming the beginning and you don't need to do other editing, then you may be able to just pull it off with something free on your computer. Deb says, if you do more than one challenge, does each challenge have its own vault? Yes. I have watched one of Martha's videos interviewing Emily and she referred to an interview y'all did with her. I went to our YouTube, put her name in the search but could not find it. How can I find that video? That was one with Emily and Piata. And that's a good question. That wouldn't have been that far back. I think it's called Young Living Business System Review. If I go and I look at that. Yes, it's called Young Living Business System Review. That is the title of that YouTube video. If you want to see a couple of interviews from from folks who have Get Oiling and Go For Gold, how they've set up their websites, how they're generating leads and how their businesses are growing as a result of this training. Go to our YouTube channel and look up Young Living Business System Review. That's there. All right, Amy and Phil, hosted a class this week on Zoom, sent a few people from the class to my site. They were concerned about putting their info on my landing page despite already knowing me from the class. And I've been having trouble getting people into my funnel through my landing page. Most people I've talked to just want to get to my site. Do you advise against getting rid of the landing page or is there a way to bypass it for certain people like another link? So if you're just talking about sharing a website theme, like one of our prebuilt themes, under your site settings, you can actually choose to not have a landing page if you want to use your site as a sharing tool. That's perfectly fine. You should be setting up your your sharing tool, right? If you're going to use the Get Oiling website as a sharing tool, you should be setting the sharing of that up in such a way that someone has committed their time to you and is committed to following the process which you prescribe to them. Not just you sharing the link with them and saying, hey, check it out. Let me know when you do. But to set this up from a strategic perspective with your business and say, okay, we're going to set an appointment at that time. You're going to put your name and your email here on the site and then you're going to, we're going to walk through that page together on the other side. In lieu of that, if you want to skip over that, if that makes you feel uncomfortable, if you're just, you feel like that's way too flame red for you, then you would follow the same process, but just remove the need to have them opt in. Understand that that people will become more confident in sharing their information with you the more value they perceive from you that's relevant to them. So just continue to commit to showing up and providing something of value to others first so that they feel comfortable giving you their information. All right. What were the two names of the free photo sites? That was Pixabay, P-I-X-A-B-A-Y and Unsplash, U-N-S-P-L-A-S-H, both of those are dot com. All right, Camelia, when you use your text or email, where does the response go to? Will they know it's from me? What do they see? So you're going to have, if you're using text, if you've got your own two way texting, you'll have your own phone number. And so that will come from your number inside of Get Oiling. And the email from which it will come is the one that you have linked to your Get Oiling account. They will see that that's from you in email. They may not if they don't have this phone number from you that's attached to your Get Oiling. Then you would just need to announce yourself, let them know that it's you in that email. All right, when creating Go For Gold Specialty Program, is that the best to be put into an online class or make the whole vault a specialty program? It really depends on how you want to structure that, Diane. I highly recommend using online classes in our system to repeat the steps that you would normally repeat with anyone, right? If you for you to create a course that's going to lead people towards a solution, use the online class for that and then build a community off of it. Lot of ways that you could do it, but I personally, for the sake of time and leverage, prefer, really prefer classes. So that that's automated. All right, Mary says, I was asking questions in chat. Would you ever set up a vault for active prospects? If you don't want to do it in a Facebook group, or does that not make sense? I would absolutely make a member area vault for prospects if you don't want to use Facebook. There is absolutely no reason why you shouldn't have an easy to access well organized vault of information for your leads and you can do that with Get Oiling. I personally, I mean, guys, it's kind of part of the reason why Get Oiling doesn't have a Facebook group and I don't, it's not just me that believes this. Like, it's not a very efficient way to interact with people. It's a great way to get interaction and to build community and to feel close to people, get to know each other. But man, when the rubber hits the road, like they're not efficient. Like people ask the same questions over and over again and it's hard for them to find information and that one post that you did about that one topic, like absolutely put this into a Get Oiling Vault, especially the most important stuff. And so that way, when people ask you questions, you can say, here it is, it's over there. And you don't have to go fishing inside of a Facebook group to try to find one post. And maybe you can't remember exactly how it was ordered, so you can't search for it. Right? One of these is way more efficient than the other. All right. And then, secondly, on the graphic, your big picture business map, Thursday is grow and retain. Are the groups mentioned there in Get Oiling or on Facebook? It is up to you. Some people like to use that strategy on Facebook only. I don't recommend that for the reasons I've just shared. I personally recommend having all of them on Get Oiling or only having a lead group on Facebook. All right. Am I able to search the map, your message on the Get Oiling YouTube channel? No, Deb, that is something that is exclusively inside of Go For Gold. All right, regarding YouTube videos, there are no restrictions regarding us mentioning Young Living, Google, Young Living, Clickvideos, tons of video content. Tons of Young Living video content. Just make sure that if you're talking about Young Living, in title or in the video that you're complying. And it's totally fine. Tons of content. Go make great content about Young Living because there's plenty of people out there who are peddling garbage to make money with negative SEO. All right, Linda asks, once they sign up on our landing page, when they go back to your site next time, will they be required to complete the information again? If this is the front page of your site, so if you're using a Get Oiling theme and you have a landing page applied to it, no, they will not have to register again. If you have a funnel and they are trying to access what's on the other side of the funnel, they would have to register again. This is why it's so important in your campaigns to provide links that point them back to the thing that they came for. This is why campaigns are attached to landing pages because people can say, oh, I want that. And then, you know, squirrel or life or whatever. And they don't necessarily get to get that thing they came for right away. This is why you make appointments when you're sharing Young Living and you're using our website to do it. So people don't get distracted and then maybe never look. So, yeah, make sure that, make sure you're using this in a systematic way if this is a sharing tool. Otherwise, make sure you have a campaign attached to your landing page that points them back to what they came for. All right. Camelia, okay, so you you don't have two way texting. You can text. Camelia, okay, so you, you don't have two-way texting. You can text. But it is going to have a little addendum at the bottom of the text that says that you need to reply to this other person directly. So the best way to set this up really is to just go ahead and get your two-way texting set up with GetOiling. And that way you have your own dedicated number. And you can share that and make sure your members know that they can save that into your contacts so that they're able to recognize that it's you when you're texting them. All right, is there a survey builder that could be used for new prospects? We don't have a survey builder per se, however, if you are using our custom pages and GetOiling as a landing page, we have custom fields. So you could have a webpage that they land on. That's maybe offering, this could be the front page of your funnel, right? Your landing page. When they click the button, name, email, phone number, maybe optional. But then you can ask a couple of other questions there too and choose whether or not they're required. So you can in that way, survey your people when they're coming in as leads. And that information is going to populate in that background info section at the top right of their, of their contact card. You guys are just keeping it going today. All right. Want to keep it all on GetOiling, not on Facebook with each group, da-da-da, be their own vaults or would they be a subset of one vault? So uh, this is more of a Go For Gold question, Mary, but I will say this. Members and prospects should not be in the same place because prospects don't need the same kind of communication that members do. Builders need different information from members, right? So builders are members, but not all members want to hear about builder stuff all the time, right? So there is opportunity for crossover with these, but I would keep separate lanes. So have a thing that's just for leads that gets them excited about coming over and participating in this awesome area that's just for your members. Right? And then, and then you want to get people really excited about becoming a builder. And what's in that builder group? What are the goodies that are there? So I would keep those three separate. All right, the cost for two-way texting, that's, what is that, $9 a month?
Yep, $9 a month or $99 a year.
Awesome. Jody is asking where to find the two-way texting phone number. Like if you have one, where do you find it?
Now, click on the chat link when you're in the GetOiling Back Office. It's kind of on the upper right. If you're on a mobile device, you have to click the little triple bar icon in the upper left and it'll say chat under there. But click on that and it'll take you to a screen that has your number on it.
Perfect. All right, so what do you mean by set an appointment to go through my site with them? Judy, this, this could be literally as simple as pulling up your calendar or your planner, whatever you use. When they express interest and they want you to show them something, say, okay, I'm available on this date at this time. Does that work for you? It's going to take this long. That's all I mean. Set an appointment with them. Put it in your calendar, make sure they commit to it. And then when it's time, you pick up the phone, you say, okay, go to this website. Okay, now do this. Okay, now do that. Now let's talk about this. And so that way you're present there for the full loop, right? You've got, you're not just giving a link and hoping that somebody looks through and gets it enough and is ready. The next time, 10 times, you have to follow up with them because maybe they saw it, maybe they didn't, right? You make the appointment to make sure they see and understand what they're seeing. So you, you can do that inside of GetOiling by setting up a Zoom call, scheduling a Zoom call if you wanted to. Or you could just keep it super simple. Pick a date and time and commit to the date and time. All right, Jean, is there anywhere that suggests categories to establish? I'm not sure. I feel like you might be talking about blog posts. But that's really, it's wide open how you want to tag your content if that is what you're asking. All right, Susan, lead group, same as prospect group? Yes. Yes, your lead group is prospects. These are people who are not yet your members. It could certainly have members in it, you know, who continue to contribute to the excitement and, you know, get people to move over to the actual member group. Should it be in GetOiling? That's up to you. This is something that can work really well on Facebook. Because it's very easy to just get people into it. You're not really asking a new commitment of them to start getting content on a different platform. They're just getting their toes in the water. I would say that there's a case to be made for you having a prospect group on Facebook. But if you don't want to, you can absolutely do it on GetOiling and it absolutely can work for you. All right, what type of service or person would I look for to pitch? Holly, send us a message. There's, there are some options and we're obviously exploring more options to be able to help you guys. You know, with, with getting your stuff set up. Yeah, so there's, there's movement there. Can't say for certain, but definitely reach out to us. Let's see, Susan, can you have the group in both Facebook and GetOiling? I wouldn't duplicate this. The only, the only way I think that, that I, if you wanted to, just really wanted to keep a Facebook group like for members. And it was just, it felt really important to you and you wanted to do it. Then at least store your member education and resources inside of a vault so that when you get questions from people. And when you get people started, they've got a system they can follow. Facebook groups are really hard to follow systematically. It's just, it's, it becomes herding cats, especially if it gets big. So at least have your important educational information in a vault. I recommend having it all in a vault. I personally like my free time. All right. Oh, meaning landing pages, funnels, custom site, et cetera. I'm not sure what you, let's see. Holly, oh yes, yeah, you mean help with that? Yes, reach out. Let's talk about that. Let's see, oh, contact categories. So when you upload your contacts to GetOiling, we are going to have tags that populate for you already based on your upload from the VO. When you create a landing page, you apply the tag. So if you're creating a landing page that offers a lead magnet about skincare, then you put a tag in that says skincare. Maybe you also put a tag in that says prospect. Okay, you get, you to choose that? I would choose that based on the topic of the content that they're opting in for in the landing page. All right, Carrie, I want, if I want to jump into Go For Gold, is there a difference from going through GetOiling or directly through Martha? No, it's all the same. GetOiling.com/goforgold, I'm pretty sure new GG member is a current code right now. That'll get you a significant savings. I'm getting started. But yeah, that's all the same. One big family. All right, Suzanne, my website template is the Healthy Living one. Can I change the title of that? On the templates, can you do that?
If she's talking about, there's like this big text banner that appears over the top of the cover image right now. That's not changeable. On that specific theme, and that's the only one that appears on. So probably, hopefully that's what you're talking about, Suzanne.
But definitely reach out, let us know. You know, if you can't figure it out. All right, Susan, if you have no members in your lead group yet, how do you word it? Come join our community when there are no people in there yet. So Susan, add someone. Add someone. Add a friend, add a sideline, add, add a somebody. And then just start putting good stuff in there and inviting people to, to engage with it. One of the most important things I learned early on in this business, and I think that this is as true in network marketing as it is in internet marketing, which is the realm that you are moving into. Is to build as if, act as if, conduct yourself right now as if there were a thousand people in that group. Because you want that to happen, right? Start walking in those shoes that you want. And not like, let's not focus on what we don't have. Let's focus on what we want and act as if you have it. Because once those people get in there, they're going to be like, oh my God, why aren't there more people in there? Let me go find more people who would like to do this. You're building a team, right? Like you're not building a pedestal for yourself. You're building a community, a tribe of people to grow together. So act as if and just keep inviting. This stuff works, promise. All right, is there any video that talks about establishing contact categories? Don't want to establish them initially and then find out, I wish I'd done them differently. We do have some contact manager related content on YouTube. So if you search contact manager on our YouTube channel, then you're going to find some goodies like that there. I keep it pretty straightforward. It's pretty easy to add and remove tags, which is what we're talking about categorizing people. So if you feel like you did it wrong, you could always undo it. All right, if you have no member, da-da-da, I think I got that one already. All right, discount for Go For Gold. Yeah, that's new GG member. N-E-W-G-G-M-E-M-B-E-R. And that is one, one word. All right, guys, marathon today. I don't think we've gone this long in a long time. Great questions. Wow. All right. Last one, Carrie. Guys, if you have any more, send them to us. All right, I've not been able to join your trainings here for a while. If I were just beginning with funnels, vaults, et cetera, should I just go back to the YouTube page and start from your first ones? To get this training or is there a faster way to get the bones of the training to get these built? Funnels specifically, Carrie. GetOiling.com/getleads is actually, that's a vault in our member area that is step-by-step video. You know, checklist, all that kind of good stuff. It'll show you exactly how to do it. And if you aren't in Go For Gold, that also teaches you how to build a funnel. But then really importantly, how to use the funnel. And then how to scale the impact of the funnel and how to structure your business. So that the funnel feeds it. And then one thing feeds another, like it's a stacked strategy. It's comprehensive. People are getting crazy results. Can't recommend enough. GetOiling.com/goforgold. New GG member right now should be able to get you a good savings on that. And there is a, Martha actually has a Facebook group there. So while we don't necessarily maintain a group like that, we do these live sessions and have our support by email. We are very active in that group. So, all right. Big day. Okay, you guys, thank you for sticking around. Thank you for all your great questions. We will see you in the inbox. Welcome again to Colin, our newest teammate. I know he had to run off. And yeah, excited to see you guys next week.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good weekend, everybody.